That's perfect. I mean, Brian, the question gets into some detail.
What is this?
It's super appropriate.
Uh, the rec feed, one pager.
Ah.
It does. Is Skype gonna come through?
Right. This is actually... You gonna stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, a couple of sites. We don't have a public hearing tonight, that's why. So I wanna add a couple of things to the agenda. These are all, this is a really quick thing. So we got a one-pager regarding the EFC application that we submitted in June. So let's just add that as the first thing on the agenda. We can do that quick and get it over with. And then, um, I'll do that on announcements. I'll do that on announcements. That's it. Anyone else?
Um, Don wanted, I don't know if he's gonna be successful here, but are you, is he here?
He's gone.
Um, he wanted to move up public access in case...
Sure, yeah, we can, why don't we do that? We'll do that as number two.
Okay.
Well, we'll do that pending when Don arrives.
Right, because we're not gonna do it at all without him knowing.
It will do, actually, as soon as he gets on, we'll just bump it up to, if that's, you know, the thing that he's most interested in talking about while he's remote. That's fine. Anyone else for changes?
Yeah, you can drop number 16.
Okay, eliminate 16. Anything else?
I'm not sure how much has advanced on number eight, 1223.
Let's just put that on the next meeting.
Sorry, Mr. ...
Yep.
We're gonna move number eight to the next meeting.
Sweet.
Yep.
And I also wanna have a discussion about workshop on hydrology and the NBR and all of us discussing when we can do it. Let's add that as 6A under the NBR zone. Okay, anything else before we...
What, you said the NBR and what else?
Hydrology.
Oh, right.
Okay, I motioned to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm, okay, I'm gonna just move this, before polo comma, I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone here for a public comment? Anything you want, anything that you, uh...
No pressure.
See in our community that you feel the local government is overlooking. Okay. Yeah?
No, I'm just saying, I'm just here to watch.
All right, announcement, so we had this repair of a water leak on Main Street, and that took place on November 2nd, and our DPW looks at our water usage on a daily basis. We're also really excited because it seems like we're using about, we're on pace to use 4 million gallons less than we used last year, and we're, and in 2016, we used about 20 million gallons less than we did in 2015. So the less water we use, the less money we send to the New York City DEP. But the repair that we did last week, we, you know, it's really interesting, it's like you can download an app about how large a hole is in a water main, based on the size of the hole and the pressure in the pipe, and then you can eyeball how many gallons per minute of water gets lost out of that pipe, and then we know how much we pay on a gallon-per-minute basis for water, and we were estimating, based on the size of the hole in the pipe, that we may have been losing 100 gallons per minute, which is equal to about $100,000 per year in our water fund, and our total water fund expenses is $1.6 million per year. So we've been monitoring on a daily basis, and it turns out that our water consumption since that pipe has been repaired is down about 100 gallons per minute. So that's really exciting news that we may have identified and then repaired, a hole in our system that was just leaking away about $100,000 a year. The next item is, our village board has approved to receive grant money from the Hudson River Estuary Program. So this is a program that we got $246,000, and then we have to spend about $100,000 of our own money, including engineering fees, to replace the culvert underneath the rail trail, and that's the section of the rail trail that's just south of Water Street Market. So that, that culvert was collapsing upon itself, and the Hudson River Estuary was motivated to give us money to repair that because there's an important habitat function for critters to go from the, the walk hill through that culvert into a stream and then back and forth. So that's why we, we were granted these funds, but this is a fairly involved construction project, and that will take place starting Monday, and that means that we have to make our community aware that that small section of the rail trail will be closed for probably about a month, and there will be a time when that section of Water Street Market will also be closed, so traffic will have to be diverted around. That should be a whole lot less than one month because there's not as much going on construction-wise for that piece of the culvert repair, because it's two culverts, one underneath the road and one underneath the rail trail. So those are my two announcements. Anyone else wanna announce anything? Nope? Okay, moving on to our business agenda. So the first thing that I wanted to add was, in June, we submitted an application to the Environmental Facilities Corporation, and we were seeking grant money to help us repair six different sections of aged-out infrastructure in our water conveyance system. So we have pipes that provide water to households and businesses and schools that are 100 years old and probably have leaks, and we were just speaking earlier about how expensive leaks are, and tuberculated materials inside the pipes, which is just gross, because we've all seen the pictures of what, what those pipes look like, it's just built, built up magnesium and iron from decades of, of byproducts running through the pipes. So we submitted to Environmental Facilities Corp. We were looking for $3 million. We did not receive the award. This is part of a broader $2.5 billion program that the governor launched earlier this year, but, you know, we're playing a long game here. We're, we're going to resubmit that application again next year. So we got a one-page form, and this saves us some money because instead of resubmitting an application and paying a few thousand dollars for engineering studies and a grant writer, we can just keep the same application open just by filling out a form. So my motion is for the board to authorize me to sign this form and send it back to EFC so we can keep that same application open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then, the other good thing is that I spoke with the president of the Environmental Facilities Corporation yesterday, and I had asked her if we could do kind of like an after-the-application review of, of our request from earlier this year to see what their, what, what the folks at EFC, as well as the Department of Health, liked about our application and didn't like about our application. You know, that kind of feedback was also requested by the individual who helps us write our grants, so we're, and she was very open to meeting with us and going over our application to try to get $3 million. Okay, so is Don here yet? So we're, we'll just...
Does not appear to be that way.
We'll just wait on the, on the next item. Okay, so the...
We've got like all these high school seniors, can't they figure this out? We're trying to Skype in Don, who isn't here. They've been doing it on town board. It's absolutely legal to Skype into a meeting, so, but you gotta figure, did you get it going?
Yeah.
Is he there? Misses Hannah? Hello?
Don, where'd he go?
Hi there.
Hi.
Hello.
Do you want to chat?
Thank you.
You wanna give Don a microphone? Okay, so Don, you, you had asked that we...
Perfect timing.
You had asked that, you know, because we don't know how temperamental the Skype connection might be, so you wanted to move the recording of meetings to public access earlier on, at least while, while we have you, so we're gonna bump that up right now. So did you wanna add anything about that topic?
Sure. There's some information coming to the board, both from me and from Anton Stewart. I'm preparing, in conjunction with Bob Fagan, a report to the board on exactly what, what happens on Channel 23, what programming is there, what the schedule is, because I think that would help the board know what sort of an asset it is. It's not just live meetings. All the meetings are rebroadcast on a regular schedule, so people wanna see a village board meeting, they always know that on Wednesday at certain times, they can review the rebroadcast. So that information is being developed, and we will have that to you. I know Anton said he was sick and unable to do some of the work he had promised, but there is some more information coming to the board, and I think you all should have it by the next meeting.
Okay, so that's, that's a report that you and Bob Fagan are putting together, and then separately, Anton is gonna provide us with some other information about like an alternative to BoxCast?
That's correct, yes.
Did you, like in your most recent conversation with Anton, did he say when he'll have that? Because I, I understand he may have had some scheduling problems, but I thought we were gonna get a response from him by now already.
Well, last email I saw with regard to the public access meeting, which was scheduled for last evening, is that he's been sick for three weeks.
Ah, okay.
Uh, he is coming out of it now, but I will promise on his behalf that we'll have that information to the board by the next meeting, or before, by the next package, pardon me.
Well, that was really like technical suggestions that he was gonna offer in terms of how we could take some of our existing hardware and, and improve the, like if we're, if we're recording a meeting here, he was saying that there was a, an easier way to get that meeting streamed to Channel 23, and wherever else we wanted, for that matter, whether it's Facebook or YouTube or... So I, I, you know, that's what we were waiting on from Anton.
That's correct.
Okay. So we're hoping to have that in a, in a week or so?
Yeah, you'll also have a primer from me, which is started, I was just waiting for some information from Fagan, the weekly schedule, which I just received by email today, so I'll put that together, and you should have that from me next couple of days after I return home.
Anyone else here have questions on public access?
Right now.
Okay.
Did we do the consent?
We did the consent agenda. I moved it up. Okay, so the next item on our business agenda is the sales tax revenue, this, the, the name here, it says New Palt Sales Tax Revenue for Town and Village. So to provide a little bit of background, the way it works is that, that towns and villages, they are basically told how much sales tax revenue they will receive as per an agreement between the city of Kingston and the county of Ulster. Those are the only two entities at the table when the, the sales tax distribution agreement is, is sorted out. And what has happened within the, the village is that the proceeds that we receive via sales tax go to the, to the Towns A Fund, and the Towns A Fund is, is their pot of money that is used for all town and village-wide services. It's very confusing in New Palt's in that we have both a town and a village, but what's interesting is that every village resident is also a town resident. So we're the village board. We don't represent any of the folks who live outside of the village boundaries, but the town board, those are our elected officials. So we all live in the village, so the town supervisor and the folks on the town council who were elected last night, those are our elected officials, whereas if you live, let's say, you know, on North or South Ohioville, or Rocky Hill Road, or Plains Road to the South, or Mountain Rest Road, any of those neighborhoods that are outside of the village, we do not represent those folks, except we're the government board for this kind of small, more densely populated area. So the, the funds that are received by New Palt's, they all go into a, a collection basket held by the town, and then what we're looking to do is to memorialize the agreement between the town and the village that says, hey, town board, when you get those funds, make sure you keep those funds in that collection basket that is to be used for both town and village residents. So that's one thing that we were trying to do with that, with that discussion. We, we have a draft resolution. It's not ready for prime time or, or public disclosure yet, but this is kind of the, the idea. And then additionally, we were also interested in just making sure it was very clear how much revenue is received by New Palt's. So we all know that, you know, there's a sales tax attached to anything that you buy in New Palt's, and, and one might automatically believe that the local government receives funds because of those, those sales transactions, but the vast majority of the sales tax that is collected in New Palt's, and I received data from the New York State Department of Taxation, that for a 12-month period ending in the first quarter of 2017, New Palt's received $11.3 million. So half of that money goes to the state of New York, because it's an 8% sales tax rate, so 4% goes to the state of New York, and then the other 4% goes into a basket for local entities, including the county, city of Kingston, and then 22 municipalities, towns and villages in Ulster County. So of that half of the 11 and a half, or 11.3 million dollars, 85% of it goes to the county, 11 and a half percent of it goes to the city of Kingston, and the other 3 and a half percent gets shared amongst 22 municipalities. You probably didn't even realize that there were 22 towns and villages in Ulster County. I mean, I only learned about some of these names, like the town of Denning and, you know, there's...
There's like 600 people there.
Yeah. But they get some sales tax revenue that is generated in New Palt's, and we've also received, based on the information that we got from the New York State Department of Taxation, that in New Palt's, 5 point something percent of all the sales tax in the entire county is generated in New Palt's. But then, only a fraction of that sales tax is then sent to that collection basket that I referred to earlier, that is held by the, the town government. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to have a conversation or make the public aware that there may be some imbalances in terms of what we do locally in terms of supporting the generation of sales tax revenue, like for instance, our public works guys come in and, and perform overtime on the weekends to empty trash containers on Main Street, and then we take that trash and we drive it to the dump, and we pay a tipping fee. So the more activity or downtown commerce that is often directly related to sales tax generation costs us money, and the only way that we get money is via property tax. We don't get any money via sales tax in the village.
Via the town.
Via the town, right? And then, but, you know, that, that pays for a thing, like, an example of a town and village-wide service that gets paid for out of the Towns A Fund is the police. So that's, you know, we have one police force that's shared amongst the, the town and the village. So that leads us to this, this request from Ulster County where, and, and there's no question about it, that Ulster County, you know, one of the, the big things that they took over for the towns recently is the, the safety net expenditure. I'm not great at explaining what exactly is involved in that, maybe you can, or...
It would take a while, but it's basically social welfare programs.
All right, so, so that is something that is paid for via the county, and, you know, county roads that include roads that go through New Palt's are paid for via the county's budget, and I would say about two-thirds, I mean, the estimate for the 2018 budget is that $117 million in county sales tax will be used by the county for various county programs, and I think that the total county budget is around $300 million. So it's, it's less than half, I was wrong, it's not two-thirds. So if you have a county road, and, you know, we saw in New Palt's recently, the Carmine Liberta Bridge was constructed, and that...
Re-construted.
Re-construted.
The bridge, right?
Built from scratch, over the walk hill. So that was a, a county project, so they paid for the vast majority of that, although we did pay $530,000 towards that project. That money came out of our new arising basket of funds that we're supposed to now be using to construct two new fire stations. So I think it, it's really difficult for the village to get comfortable with the idea of paying for the maintenance of the, the overlook at a county-owned piece of property when, you know, I think the overlook is a great thing, it's great for sales tax generation, but if we have no method for collecting, you know, or receiving sales tax, or we're not being provided sales tax, I don't think it's really fair to our local constituents to then also pay for the maintenance of, of the walk, or the overlook next to the bridge. So I wanted to open that up for, for discussion.
So just to add a little detail, bits and pieces to what you said, the reason that the village is not at the table when that agreement is made about how much sales tax we get back is because New York State law says that it's only cities get a voice in those negotiations with, with the county. So we're sort of, and those agreements are every three years, and they just made one, so we're trying to start talking about this now, so when the next agreement comes, we can say, hey, we're contributing 5%, we're only getting 0.1% back. But I always make sure to say about this that I believe in redistributive policies, that, you know, I'm not, I would never argue that we should get all of that 5% back. There's other places that are not as, uh, solid as we are, for lack of a better word. You know, I think it's okay to, you know, give a little bit more to places that have higher poverty rates, like Ellenville, for example. So, but I think, um, pursuing the idea of getting more than 0.1%, but less than 5.2% in the next three years is a conversation that we have as a responsibility to our taxpayers. In terms of the specifics right now with the bridge, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I don't see why the county, county shouldn't be...
Yeah, they should, I'm, my feeling is that they're asking us to, to pay for something that, that directly relates to sales tax generation. I would, I would suggest that, you know, the maintenance be paid for by them, and, you know, their maintenance request also was asking us, in addition to dealing with the snow and the leaves and trash, but also be responsible for the lighting fixtures and graffiti and weeds, and, and weeding of the gardens, right?
All, all the ripple effects of the people who are coming here and buying things and generating the sales tax.
Yeah, I got, I received an estimate from our Department of Public Works, you know, to just do the, the maintenance that was described in this proposed agreement, you know, it's, it's approaching $5,000 a year.
Good question. Of the 22 communities that receive this percentage, is it all scaled the same way? Every community gets the same amount of money?
No, it's based on the...
Assessed value?
It's based on the assessed value, and so that also is a, a challenge for New Palt's because in New Palt's, we have an outsized amount of property off the tax rolls, and that's one of the reasons why people come and visit New Palt's, is because we have the state university here, and we have, you know, a lot of protected open space here via the Mohawk Preserve primarily. So, you know, those are the reasons that people come here, and then that also kind of hinders our, our ratio in terms of how much we receive, or how much the town board receives in terms of, of sales tax revenue.
And of these communities, are we one of the first asking for this, or...
This is a discussion...
We're not asking for anything.
Yeah, we're not...
We're just talking at this point.
Yeah. Yeah, and this is a discussion that, that other communities have brought up in the past, like the supervisor from the town of Ulster and, you know, other, other folks. This is, none of this is like, yeah, stuff that hasn't been discussed before.
Okay.
And just to amplify that point, Tim, I had done some research several years ago, and the number is somewhere close to 50% of the total acreage in New Palt's, which is off the tax rolls. You look, you look at rail trail, the preserve, the college, churches, schools, it's only about half of the, the acreage that we have in New Palt's that actually generates, generates that sort of revenue, so...
That's probably for the village, right, Don?
That's good. You know, it was five years ago, so I'm gonna, I'm not gonna follow my sword in that. I know that's for the community of New Palt's.
Yeah, whatever it is, if it's village or town, we definitely have a, a lot of, off the, the tax roll property in our community, and we, and we love that. We, you know, we, we benefit from having the college here, we benefit from having the mountain house or the Mohawk Preserve here.
So what are you suggesting, Tim, that we do with this agreement with the county at this time?
Well, really, two things, because we have this, this draft resolution discussing how we share tax revenue into the Towns A Fund, and then we also have to respond to the county regarding their, their request that we pay for the maintenance, really two different things.
Right.
I kinda feel like the, the resolution is still a draft. I like the idea of sharing it with our county legislators, Jim Delane and Hector Rodriguez. Both were re-elected last night by an overwhelming ratios because they were unopposed.
Yeah, I was gonna say. No ratio, 100%.
No. Hector said he got 92% of the vote.
Oh, there were some write-ins, that's right, there were some write-ins.
And Hector and I spoke about him attending this meeting. There, there's still a chance that he could attend, so, you know, if he enters the room, we'll, we'll, we'll chat with Hector about this, but if, you know, he's held up somewhere else, then, you know, I'll, maybe I'm asking the board to, to be comfortable with the idea that I'll share this, this draft with Hector, and maybe at our next meeting, him and Jim can attend and we can continue the conversation on that topic.
Tim, have we talked to the town, is the town on board with this?
Yes, I've, I've shown the draft to Neil. I mean, this, this really benefits the, the town a great deal, because another path that we could take is that we could actually request that we receive the village's portion of the, now currently, the town gets about between $200,000 and $250,000 per year, based on the existing agreement between the city of Kingston and the county. So we could, and, and the way it shakes out is that we represent about 25% of the assessed value in all of New Palt's, so we could pull out our 25% of that $200,000, and then the, the town would get 25% less in their A Fund. So I don't really feel like that gets us anywhere, you know, that would put them in a jam, because, you know, they've been budgeting for years, you know, that they would continue to receive this, this revenue at the same rate.
It would be over $50,000 if we did that, so that would be a hit. It would be over $50,000 if we did that, so that would be a hit to them, which we don't want to do that to them.
They are up, we are the-
And we could do that, because it doesn't change the overall number coming from the county, so it doesn't mess with that other agreement, it's just about how the money goes out. So we could, at this, we could do it now, if we wanted to. We could say, hey, we want to change this, just don't give it to us through the town, give it straight to us, and we would get about 56 grand this year, but it wouldn't be a very neighborly thing to do.
No, that's not good for anybody to do that.
Other towns do, Sagardis does it, the village of Sagardis.
Both Sagardis and Ellenville have villages, so instead of their town receiving the full amount, they each get their little slice of the pie.
Well, hopefully, when we do go, when that conversation is at that table, that we're not allowed to go to, maybe we can expand our piece of the pie to where we are getting our portion, and the town is not receiving any less for us receiving the portion as well. Either way, it would be nice to get more money.
I like the way you phrase that meeting, that we're not gonna be at the table.
Right.
Well, we're not.
We're not at all.
Well, we are not a city, thankfully.
Yeah, we could become a city, and then we could always sit at the table.
Good luck with that.
Okay.
New York State doesn't make cities anymore. It doesn't like, there's different rules if you're a city than if you're a village and a town, and the way that we know that Albany doesn't like cities and the rules around cities is that they haven't created one since like the 1940s.
Yeah, Albany would like to see fewer governors, not more, right?
Right. Well, that would just be a name change, but it would be a name change that would burden them with more responsibility, because they have more responsibility to give funding to cities than they do to us.
Okay. Alright, so then I will, I can officially respond, should we, we can call all the question about how we want to respond to the county regarding this maintenance request? Does anyone want to help me with that?
So, I have a couple of questions. So I don't see a dollar amount on this agreement.
Well, there is no dollar amount, they're just saying, anything maintenance required, you handle.
Right.
The dollar amount I got from our public works superintendent, when I asked him how much does he think it will cost us?
Isn't it a county asset?
It's a county-owned piece of property.
Which is a county asset.
Yeah, it's backed by county crews. So if we have to maintain it, you know, we should have built it. I don't mind maintaining something that our people have built, but if we didn't build it, we don't maintain it, they build it.
Yeah, and I hate to get nitpicky, but when they were constructing it, I asked them not to put pavers on the overlook. I had concerns about weeds growing up through the pavers, because in New Paltz, we have, you know, really solid experience with problematic pavers on that Rotary Garden, which looks unsightly, and we all probably get complaints about regularly. So, you know, I would have never put pavers in, they should have put something that is easier to maintain. That's something that's, you know, that our public works guys beat over our heads all the time. They say, well, it's great that you guys want to do this or that, and-
Well, people want to do it because it's pervious, or less impervious.
Hmm, that was, no, no, because it's not impervious below, it's completely just aesthetic. It's just on top of the imperv-
But you get to say that. Not saying it's true.
Yeah. No, it just looks classier, probably in their mind, than just poured concrete, but poured concrete is easier to maintain, and that's what, you know, when we task our public works guys with new projects, we need to always be mindful of how difficult will it be to maintain anything that we're building new.
So what action, I'm sort of hearing that there's votes here to, I don't know if we need to make a motion to say, hey, county, we are not willing at this time to pay for the maintenance.
That's your motion? I like that wording, that word, second?
Hey, county? Don't put that part.
Hey, county, we're not willing. So, okay, Bill?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, that was, so we're gonna use that language.
Okay, can you read that back?
Um, I-
Hey.
County, we're not willing to take on the maintenance responsibilities at this time.
Right.
That was the operative phrase, too.
Okay.
Next issue, the new water filtration unit project at the water treatment plant. So we treat our water up at the water treatment plant, we have four reservoirs where we have surface water, and then we also buy water from the New York City DEP that flows through the Catskill Aqueduct. We have to put that water through a surface water filtration unit. And a few years ago, before any of us were in office, the current village board was very excited about trying to receive grant money from the USDA, and then they spent a lot of time and money, you know, as I was talking about before, the idea of preparing grant applications and the engineering required to include in a grant application is very arduous. So they submitted the application to USDA, USDA said, we don't have a grant for you, however, we're gonna let you borrow money so you can put in your new water filtration plant. And the administration at the time was very frustrated with that response. They said, but however, it's something we have to do, we're gonna go ahead and borrow this money from USDA, and, you know, it's about a 25-year-old filtration unit, it's at the end of its useful life. The concern is that at some point, it will fail. So we have been working with our village engineer, designing a system. The budget for that project, including engineering costs, was $4.1 million as of November 2016. We received some updated estimates, now the project is closer to $5 million. That's, I don't understand how things go up by nearly 25% in less than one year. You know, when you look at the various items that have increased in cost, the primary driver has been the general and electrical contracting, and we're told this, you know, that's the market right now, there's, you know, the firms that can do this kind of work are probably not, you know, not short work, so they're able to charge a fair amount of money, more than what they would a few years ago. So what we've been trying to do is, we have a gentleman on our Village Environmental Policy Board that I've been talking with, to see if he has any suggestions about how we go ahead and ask questions, to see if there's an opportunity to value engineering, to maybe pursue a project that costs less, because this is gonna be an enormous expense for our water fund. I was doing some calculations with our treasurer, and about half of our fund expenses, if we had expenses at $1.6 million, would be debt service. So, you know, that's troubling for us, because if we have repair needs or emergencies, we really don't have a great deal of ability to pay for things unless we just take on more debt, and, you know, you generally want to be mindful of how much debt you have versus your overall expenses. So we're still in the midst of trying to ask some questions about what's involved in that project. I've also asked the Facilities Department at SUNY New Paltz, they have engineers on staff, who said that they would take a look at the bid documents for this project that were released just this past February, and maybe they'll have some ideas that could help with having a slightly less expensive project.
So are we formally on hold right now, until we-
No, we're not formally on hold. Where we are is that we submitted bid documents to any firms that might be interested in taking on this type of work, and we'll see what, they'll come back to us as far as, well, you know, company A might say it'll cost us X to do this, where company B will say it'll cost Y, so there's a-
So is that based on the earlier specs? I know that you had sent an email, I can't remember to-
That's based on the existing specs, right? But I have tried to ask questions about, are we building a filtration unit that is designed for the right amount of capacity at our plants? So there's basically like three sections of the plant, and you could put a 2 million gallon tank in, it's 2 million gallons per day, a tank that could do 2 million gallons per day in each of the three. So if we build 2 million, that's a 4 million gallon total daily volume, and the idea is that the regulators want to see you able to produce at least a certain amount of water if one, if half of your units go down.
So you need that much, is that redundancy?
But that's the thing, it's like we use, even on our busiest water consumption days in New Paltz, where we're only using 900,000 gallons per day. So this means that if both are flowing, then you have 4 million gallons per day of capacity. Do we need all that capacity? Are there also concerns about, like, if you're, you know, is your plant running as efficiently as possible when it's been oversized?
Yeah.
Like, will there be unnecessary expenses because your plant is larger than it needs to be? Like, if you're only, you know, if you're only using it for 900,000 gallons a day, and you've got 4 million gallons of capacity, does that affect our-
So why didn't even start that high? That's way more than double.
Yes, I think it's a little ambitious, and maybe the thinking was, it's always better to have too much, but I think there's also something to be said for, you know, and, you know, it's fascinating how all this stuff relates to, like, what we might be considering for the NBR, like, you know, we're a village, community character, village character matters, like, we're not a city. Like, why would we be building capacity, assuming that, you know, we didn't do multi-million gallons per day in the future?
There's definitely a school of thought that says, don't overbuild your infrastructure, because then you're incentivizing a level of growth that you may not want to incentivize.
And I think the other really interesting twist to all this is, let's say, we, and, you know, our board has been proactively looking for alternative sites for groundwater, what if we source more groundwater down in the village?
Right.
Then we can reduce the amount of water that gets treated at our surface water filtration unit.
Is it more costly to run, say, three small versus one large?
Well, see, this is what the regulators require. They require you to have two of something.
Right.
So if one goes offline, you still have the other one.
Right, so, size-wise, what's, it's more efficient to go large than small?
I'm still getting answers back from the engineer on that question.
So we've just been talking about literal size. It's also my understanding that, I think it's important to recognize that you've also indicated to me that it's like cleaning the water as if it's coming out of the Walk Hill River. Like, we're also gonna be gaining a level of cleaning, because the regulators say, assume worst-case scenarios. So it's sort of also the Cadillac version of that in that respect, too. I mean, maybe, I know we're doing that to a certain extent already, but-
I don't know that there's even a filtration unit that you could buy that could not treat really troubled water. I mean, we have an advantage in New Paltz in that the water that we're treating that comes from the DEP is very good quality, and then the water that is part of the Mohan Preserve watershed that goes into our reservoirs is super-high-quality water.
Right.
So we're taking two really high-quality water sources, and we're putting it through a fancy water filtration unit. But you can't-
And federal law says, even if your water is really good quality, you still have to treat it the same way, some two things.
No, Don, that's exactly it. The point you raised is exactly it, is that surface water is surface water, the regulators don't care whether you're, you know, putting low-quality surface water through the unit or high-quality surface water.
And as I understand the system that we're putting in place, it has a rack that can handle 2 million gallons per day, but we don't have to fill that rack. We can fill that rack three-quarters of the way, so that it will handle 1.5, or we could conceivably fill that rack just halfway, so it would treat just a million with the resulting savings. So I think we have the flexibility here.
Well, we asked that question, and we're still getting feedback from the engineer. They, you know, their initial response was that the savings difference would not be significant. But I kind of feel, you know, any dollar is something that we need to, you know, take a hard look at saving.
I find that suspect, because there might be marginal savings in the original purchase, but the cost of treating these things on an ongoing basis, if we're only using three-quarters of the plant as opposed to 100% of the plant, I would have to imagine the operations costs would be lower, too, and that would be a larger savings over time. But as you say, you're getting that information, so.
Yeah, no, you're echoing exactly the same points that both Ted has echoed, and I've spoken with some folks at the DEC, they're saying the same thing, that if you oversize your plant, and you're not using it to its capacity, you're unnecessarily inflating your operation costs. So I think we're all asking the right questions.
Great.
So one thing that we might consider is the idea of, like, should we hire a third-party set of eyes? Like, should we retain another engineering firm and say, you know, give us a price, you know, take a really hard look at these plans? Could you, you know, identify ways for us to, you know, tweak some of the edges to bring down the cost from $5 million?
What are our time constraints in terms of funding?
So, and that's also something that's very unique to New Paltz, is that, like, we're not like a regular community where we have a static amount of water use all year-round. You know, our whole objective here was to use a temporary plant on the back of a tractor-trailer that we pull in during the summer, when we do less volume, because the college is away. So we have this teeny-tiny window where we could, you know, have a temporary plant on a tractor-trailer to do this work. So the thinking was, the temporary plant would sit there next summer, and then we would construct the new plant during the summer, and then this thing would be online once the SUNY students return. And that was exactly the plan that we were shooting for last year, but then we ran out of time. But the challenge this time is, we have now signed a contract with Paul Corporation, they're the manufacturer of the filtration unit, and it's kind of like one of those things where, you know, you have 30 days to, you know, endure this much penalty, you have 60 days, and then the penalty raises to that much, you have 90 days, and then the penalty goes up. So at some point, if we haven't changed course, we'll be stuck with exactly the plan that we have now. So we do have, we are facing a time crunch.
And how does our exploration factor into this decision?
Well, right, if we could wave a magic wand and say that, wow, we just found 300 gallons per minute of groundwater, you know, in the village, then that would make a lot of this decision-making a lot easier, but, you know, we're looking at different sites, we're getting approvals from the Department of Health before we drill, you know, everything takes, you know, we're bureaucracy, we move like at a glacial pace.
So at what point do we need to make a decision in order to have this happen next summer?
I don't remember the time, like, because Will looked at our contract with Paul Corp, and he kind of spelled out those dates. But it's approaching, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it's, you know, it's like 30 days, 60 days, something like that, yeah. I think I have that email that I could circulate with the board, just so we all know that those dates are, too.
Hector sends his regrets, he's stuck at the county.
Okay.
So you're just informing us now, we have no decisions to make, right?
No. Maybe it'd be a good goal, like, if we have that workshop meeting, we can have a, you know, workshop meeting before Thanksgiving, we can have an updated, you know, or at least some sort of action plan for this thing, like, stay the course- know, or at least some sort of action plan for this thing, like, stay the course or make a tweak. Let's plan on that. So our, our agenda now includes three items for that workshop meeting, plus any other lawful business, that's something Will always tells us to include in any workshop.
So is that on that list topic? I was going to ask, move security deposit up, I think it would be beneficial for our high school seniors to hear that discussion.
Yeah, let's do that. So we're going to do security deposit number seven now.
So could I go over the, the court data first and then we can talk about the law?
Perfect.
Because I didn't get a chance to do that last time. So some of you may have heard that we're looking at changing or actually adding to our law, a sort of expansion of state law with respect to landlord-tenant relations, specifically security deposits. And since many of you are going to be going away to school next year, maybe this is good stuff for you to hear about because student housing is always an issue in campus communities, right? So it's interesting growing up in a campus community, especially if you live in the village and then you go away and then you're one of those kids that lives in those party houses, right? Or not. And I know on all the college visits that I've been going with my son lately, you know, when they talk about housing, I'm always putting it in the context of New Paltz and what I know about housing. And there's been a couple colleges that kind of blew my mind when they said they guarantee housing for four years and it's not a concern about getting off-campus housing, and they make the senior-year ones feel like they're off-campus. But anyway, so I went to school here and I remember when I was a student here that it was sort of just par for the course that you didn't get your security deposit back. You just figured that, that wasn't going to happen. It was just sort of the culture, right? So fast forward 25 years later and we still have this issue, right? We get complaints all the time. We have a landlord-tenant council, which is one of our subcommittees of the board, just to deal with landlord-tenant relations. There's a scope of issues beyond security deposits, but we hear, you know, that what I experienced when I was young undergraduate here is sort of par for the course. So in addition to trying to put more teeth on tenants' ability to get their security deposits back in the courts with the law, we also got a bunch of court data from our courts to see what happens when these kind of cases go before the courts. I wanted to see all the failure-to-return security deposit cases to see if there was any embedded bias there, right? Like, was it predictably, typically always favoring landlords? Was it always favoring tenants? Was it somewhere in between the two? Because then we could point to the courts and say, something's not right here and maybe we need to change the law, because that's what judges are doing, right? They're implement, they're interpreting law, they're implementing law. And the good news is that when I got the data from the courts, there is no patterns of bias, right? So let me back up a sec. From January 2015 to June 2017, there were 178 landlord-tenant cases in the New Paltz court. Only 31 of those, or 17.4% of them, were failure-to-return security deposit cases. The great majority were eviction and non-payment of rent cases, so when a landlord has to go to court to evict a tenant for not paying rent. And then it was sort of a smattering of other things.
But 17% for not returning security deposits, I feel is pretty high.
Yeah, and, you know, I would preface this data by saying that it's a very, it's just one slice of the world, right? There's going to be a certain amount of people that either don't have the wherewithal or resources to take their cases to court, right? So if you're living in a culture of, oh, landlords never give their security deposits back, you're not going to go to the courts to get your security deposit back because it's sort of a given, right? And so it's hard to figure out how deep that is and how much that prevents people from actually going to court to get their security deposit back, or to even know the extent of the problem. So that number is, is a big unknown, right? How many people just don't even try because they don't know or they don't have money for an attorney? Or when you are a student, which many of our tenants are, the Village of New Paltz is 70% renters. So 30% of our housing units are, you know, houses with mortgage and that people own the houses, but the other 7 in 10 are renters. So this is a significant population. And that, that rental housing is, you know, almost 1,400 housing usants in the village are tenants. So, so, and another reason why this data is limited is because New York State law says that if you are going to sue a landlord to get your security deposit back, you have to sue them where their business address is. So you could have a landlord that lives in Vermont, or New York City, or Pennsylvania, and that's actually where you'd have to sue to get your security deposit back. So I asked our village attorney and he said that's a huge lift to try to get state law changed. I don't, I know you maybe talked to him a little bit more about that.
Yeah, I also asked the same question.
But he said it's like general municipal law and it would be like a very, very hard thing to do. I actually, after our emails about it, thought maybe that we should do a little resolution to, to, to the state to say, hey, because we are a college community, this is really not a good thing for us, and then send that to all the other SUNYs and that, those host communities could do that, too. Not thinking that the state is ever going to listen to us, but I'm all about making people say no.
What about the idea of, like, we require property manager addresses? Could we use that address?
It's the LLC address.
That was what I had asked Will.
Not the owner.
Right, because we do require a local property manager, so that was why I reached out to Will and apparently...
Oh, yeah, you were telling me that, yeah. So...
It's the LLC address.
Because you don't want, it's not an action against the property manager, they might have nothing to do with, with dealing with this security deposit at all.
Right, I mean, it's a shame that there's someone locally designated to manage the property if people need to go to the LLC business to take their landlord to court. It seems like we have stuff with this.
So of those 31 cases, 26% were ruled in the tenant's favor, 23% were settlement, so that's kind of somewhere in between the two. 23% resulted in the landlord's favor, and then a full 29%, it was hard to tell what was happening there. So I thought this was good news in terms of what's happening in our courts because there's no over, there's no tendency to always have a certain outcome, which means that judges are taking things on a case-by-case basis and evaluating them. But again, I, I can't say enough that between the rule that you have to sue your landlord outside or wherever their business address is and this unknown number of people that don't even try, this is just the ones that actually get to the courts. And thank you, Becky Stewart, at the courts for providing this data for us. So does anybody have any questions about that?
I'm always curious what other is, given that it's the highest, highest percentage, you know, in your...
Well, it says claim under other is, the way I categorize them is if you could determine whether or not it was in the landlord or the tenant's favor, or something in between the two. Will, the village attorney, helped me work out these categories because I wouldn't have known how to categorize them otherwise. And claim withdrawn and dismissed are in the other category. So the reason they're in other is because due to the limitations of this data, I can't really tell if that was in the landlord or the tenant's favor.
But if a tenant's bringing a landlord to court and the case is dismissed, wouldn't that indicate that the landlord has done nothing wrong?
No, because it could be on a technicality on either side, you know, there's a lot of Ts you got to cross and Is you got to dot, and a case can be dismissed for technicality, especially, and you choose not to persist, you know, it's, it could be a give-up, you know, you were supposed to do some form, or, you know. I, I'm not speaking specifically of these cases because I can't say, but cases can get dismissed for a lot of reasons, not, and, and it was the village attorney's judgment that that wasn't necessarily, that we could conclude that that was in the landlord's... It's, it's still, would still sort of be a mix, even if we took that 12, 13% of dismissed and threw it in the landlord category, we still wouldn't be seeing any skewed...
There's no clear pattern one way or the other.
Yeah. So, and I do want to say that if and when we get that list of properties, rental properties on the website for the public to be able to review, that we should have Becky at the courts letting us know when there are cases that are, result in the tenant's favor, so that can be, you know, a variable, that can be part of the history that we supply. What we're trying to do is, so, let me back up again. When you have a rental property in the village, you have to register with the village. And in my eyes, the main reason this is really important is that what that then sets into play is that then your rental property is inspected. So if we know that it's a rental property, we then have our building inspector have it on the list of places that he has to go and make sure they have smoke detectors, are adhering to fire code, you know, safety measures and whatnot. But if we don't know a property is a rental property, then we don't inspect it. So we want to put a list of all the properties on our website so that when someone who wants to rent a place goes to rent a place, they can go to our, our website and make sure that it's a, it's a registered property. And then it'll also help us, because if it's not on there, they can say, hey, look at this ad on Craigslist, this is a rental property, you need to contact this landlord and let them know that they have to register so it can be inspected. The other thing that we want to do is to add information there so people who want to know can see the track record of their landlords. You're not in college yet, but when you get there, you'll see a thing called Rate My Professor. So this, that's a thing where college students, and be nice if you ever do this, don't be mean, college professors are human, too. Where they rate the professor, so it's sort of like Rate My Landlord, right? So it's sort of like, except that it won't be based on the opinion of a college student, it'll be based on hard data from our courts or from our building inspector who finds things wrong with it, right? So, but we're still sort of figuring out how to make that happen.
Well, we actually had a meeting about that, I was trying to bring up that.
Awesome, so that's a good transition, we could talk about that and then go into the law.
Okay, great. So we had a meeting, Don, myself, and the chair of our landlord-tenant relations council, just to get the ball rolling on the website. One of the things that we discovered is that there is going to be a decent amount... There's going to be a decent financial expense to be able to link up with the data. This is something that was in the building department's budget last year, but unfortunately the vendor for municity did not follow through fast enough to get it into last year's budget and it's not in this year's budget, so that's something we're going to have to budget for in the future. Another thing that came out of that meeting was ideally we'd like to have data coming from lots of different sources, such as the court. Unfortunately, that data needs to be manually entered into the system to then feed into the website once created. So that's something else that's going to be taxing our staff, so it's something else that we'll have to consider once we have more of the information available. But, you know, we have a very expansive wish list and we're going to see what we can do and how much it's going to cost, and then we'll come back to the board and see how to proceed. But it looks like it would be at least $1,500 a year for the enhancement to municity to have the data feed to the website, and that doesn't even count any of the manual labor that, hours that would be required to enter court data into the system to then feed to the website.
So that sounds fancy. Is there any scenario where it could be like, you know, we somehow have a Google, you know, a Google spreadsheet or something that can't be edited, you know, or even in the interim? You know, it seems like if we have a spreadsheet, that we could at least do an interim step of having that on the website until we can get this more sophisticated?
But if we have a spreadsheet, it needs to be manually updated, right? Even, you know, and we're, we're putting the course, the course...
Right, right, I'm talking about...
Because we haven't gotten all of the information yet, but I'm just saying, because speaking to some of the things that you just brought up, there are other issues, so while that's all on our wish list, we have to figure out exactly what it's all going to cost before we can really say that we're going to be doing these things.
Yeah, I'm just trying to brainstorm, I don't want to wait until next June.
You know, I'm just filling everybody in on the meeting that we had.
If we could spit out a spreadsheet now, let's just put that bad boy on the website. It would be a static document. It would just be like, this was our list on, you know, November, I can, I don't, I don't even know what month it is, November 8th or 9th, you know, just because I feel like I don't want the perfect to get in the way of the good. And I feel like I'd like to just think about an interim step until we get there.
Absolutely.
That sounds rock star and cool.
I just want to come up with a system that's not going to inundate our building department with lots of manual data when they're trying to go out and...
Right.
...send apartments and make sure they're safe.
Right.
So...
I understand.
I think we're all working towards the same goal, I'm just trying to be a little bit realistic in terms of expectations.
Very cognizant of capacity issues. Cool. So anybody have anything to say about the latest draft of the security deposit law?
I got feedback from multiple landlords that they were concerned about 129-48 Section A and the statement, the written statement specifying the reasons for the retention of any portion of the security deposit shall be accompanied by a full payment of the difference, if any, between the security deposit and the amount retained. So the landlords that approached me, approached me with specific issues with utilities and the water bills. They said that the water bill doesn't come within that timeframe and if they're going to estimate it, they want to be able to bill people for what they actually use, not estimate it and then have to worry after the fact whether they're shortchanging themselves or then writing another check to the tenant if they overcharged them in the first place. So I wanted to bring up their concerns. I don't know if, you know, if, if we keep it as-is, it would just be a cost of business thing, because if a landlord is charging someone back for their water, they estimate it based on the previous six months or 12 months, and then usage is higher than that estimate, they're never going to be able to get that money back. If it's lower, they can always go back and send the difference, but if it's higher, they're never going to get that money back. So that was the concern that was expressed to me and I wanted to bring it up.
I'd love to hear from landlords that already do this, how they do this math. At this point, in most scenarios, you're going to have a year's worth of data on usage, so to create an estimate of what one month or two months is going to be will be informed by at least two months. So I think that there's landlords that already do this and they probably do build a buffer in, hopefully not a huge buffer.
Well, the landlords that do this, that I spoke to, are doing it after they get their bill, which speaks to part of the reason why we need to do this in the first place, because people's security deposits are being held up until the water bill comes back.
Right, right.
But I just wanted to get these concerns out.
So maybe, in the, in the, so we're also putting together a handbook for landlords and tenants, maybe in the handbook, there's a little section on how do you compute estimations of utility bills, what for determine, you know, it's not...
What I don't understand about this, this concern, though, is water bills come out quarterly, right? And the state law already requires security deposits to be sent back within 30 days. So they're already facing this obstacle.
Right. I, I don't think that they, there's, but there's, really? Do you think tenants know that the state says it has to be done in 30 days?
No, I know, but, but this, this idea that, like, they've identified a flaw in this proposed law because of that, it's like, you already have a hiccup.
Right. But this, yeah.
Does, do we need a separate paragraph in utility refunded charges?
I don't think so.
Okay. I mean, I, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just trying to help flesh this out.
Right.
You know, one of the things that we have seen often at this table is where there's One of the things that we have seen often at this table is where there's a water leak and then all of a sudden someone gets a really large surprise bill. So, and you know, and that comes out of nowhere, and sometimes those amounts are really large, you're asking the landlord to put that, that's, any tenant that wanted to send a nice goodbye note to any landlord could just leave water running for the last month that they're there.
Yeah, I don't know how, I mean, guilty as charged, because I had that issue myself.
Because there's plenty of people who don't, who, like, the water is included in your, like, I have an accessory apartment in my house, I do not charge my tenant for water, it's included in their rent.
I mean, that's the simplest, easiest way for landlords to fix it, I don't know exactly how to do their business, I'm just airing the concern, I don't know that I necessarily agree with it, I just wanted to help flesh it out.
And I have heard the same concerns, a couple of landlords just stopped by my business, so it is something that's on their minds. Yeah, that same landlord.
Well, we are trying to shift behavior, right?
Sure.
So maybe this is one of the ways behavior needs to shift, right? To, because one of the main things we're doing, so New York State says you have 30 days, we're pushing that to 21 days, because we know, you know, we live in a very mobile community. So really, as Tim said, with respect to this utility bill thing, the only thing our law is doing is pushing it back from 30 to 21. So, it's not a detail of this law, I guess it's my point. And if that, like, I think Tim already said, I'll reiterate, like, if that's already, or maybe you said it, making it so tenants are not getting their money back for their security deposits, then good, I'm glad that landlords will be pushed to figure this out earlier, so they, people can get their money back. Because there's, you know, people who are renters are less inclined to have a big nut of money to have first month, last month security, right? And they need to move into a new place, so they have a lot less wiggle room in their budgets, you know, maybe they can borrow that $500 until they get their security deposit, but let's like tighten that up so that they can, you know, it just, I don't know.
No, no, you're breaching the choir, I'm just bringing up a concern that was raised.
I think, I would say bring that back to your council and say, how can we help advise landlords on how to navigate this and how to adhere to the law? Again, we have these really good landlords who are like our model landlords that are saying this can be done, so let's get them, help us, teach others. This paragraph, my concerns are the good faith language. It just seems, I mean, I know that it's sort of.
In which language are you referring to?
Core jargon, where it says good faith. I had suggested that it be more specific.
When you say where it says good faith, can you just indicate where?
In the same paragraph that we're talking about.
Paragraph A, it starts including a good faith estimate of cost.
It says it in a couple places. And I had added, you know, document, I had replaced good faith with documentation such as receipts, invoices, estimates, in a couple different places, and Will, the village attorney said, let the judge decide, they can be, they can determine what good faith is, but I've heard from a lot of people who say, that's, that's too broad, right? That's too subjective what good faith is, and that the burden of proof is on the landlord, right? And so, I'm compelled to say that they have to have like some real documentation of what costs are if they're not going to give back a portion of a security deposit, besides just a good faith estimate. I'm okay with an estimate if it's from a shop or something, but just feels a little too soft to me.
So how would you accomplish that?
I, wherever it says good faith, I would, I would say that it needs to say, you know, documentation of the cost, in the form of, for example, receipts, invoices, estimates.
So they need to really hustle to get those costs together in 21 days?
Yeah. But again, it doesn't mean that the work has to be done, it just means that, because you can have an estimate, you know, you can go to a contractor and say, how much is it going to cost to fix X, Y, and Z, and they can give you an estimate. Cynics might say they'll get their, you know, contractor friends to do it for them, but at least it's, you know, in black and white, you know, paper, like how much things cost.
So.
And also, I don't find that, you know, hustle argument very compelling either, because they got to rent that place, they got to hustle to get this stuff done before somebody moves in.
Right, well, they also may have multiple locations, so if, I'm okay with Will's suggestion of good faith and leaving it up to the judge, because if a landlord has a number of rooms or apartments that they need to rent out, and they're all at the same time, they may have a very small window to do this, to ask them to provide extensive levels of documentation, when we can just let the judge determine whether it's in good faith or not, I think we're creating a potentially unfair burden on the landlords. When they may have, you know, a number of tenants to do this for at the exact same time, because the semester ends, everybody leaves. You know, it's all or nothing when it comes to this type of, you know, one of the things that many of the landlords stress with me is that everything's cyclical, it's not like, oh, you know, this person leaves this week, this person leaves that week, it's all at once, and it's a very chaotic time in their lives, so that's part of the challenge of requiring detailed. If they can't provide an estimate that's in good faith, then let the judge throw the book at them.
I wish.
You know, I hear what you're saying, KT, in terms of good faith. You could substitute with a fair estimate or documented estimate, something along those lines, but good faith is a little nebulous to me.
Yeah.
But I thought good faith does have like a legal implication.
I don't know.
See, I think the key word is good faith versus documented.
What did we recently sign, Tim?
Well, I mean, we signed a, you know, the A, the agreement in principle with the DEP, we agreed to make a good faith attempt to renegotiate something, and that phrase was in heart, they really signed.
Right, it's legalese.
Well, actually, but I was comfortable, because it did feel that way.
So that's why I like this. But I tried, I swear. I know, this is one of those that I wish we could talk to the judges, so we can't talk to the judges about this stuff, because their job is to interpret and determine whether, when the law is broken or not, so they can't talk to us, but I would love to go to the judges and be like, so what does this mean in the real world?
What about asking a judge in another community?
Yeah.
Isn't that the challenge, is like you can't talk to judges who might rule on your future law, like judges can't write laws.
I don't know.
Can we talk to the judges in Ithaca?
What's that?
Come again?
Can we talk to the judges in Ithaca? They have a very similar law, and they have it for a long time.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
They might be able to inform us.
Or just like a judge in Kingston, who, you know, you probably know.
I don't know, I think that's a will question, if, because of some reason, it might span any law, we should just ask.
I want to bring up something separate from this, if possible.
Sure.
Do we need a definition for termination of tenancy?
Like you're saying there's a few examples?
Yeah, because we've heard from, from some of the landlords that came, and also from tenants stating different conditions in which the property was vacant.
Where is that exactly?
Well, you start the 129-48 with, within 21 days after the termination of tenancy.
Or the surrender of the premises.
Right, so I'm just wondering if that in itself needs a definition.
I'll put that on my will list to ask him, because didn't this come up differently before?
There ain't public comment.
Oh, yeah.
How do I know when someone's left?
Yeah, and maybe there is a legal definition of these things, and we can add it to the definition section.
All right, so what's our next step with this proposed law?
We need to decide if we want to use this draft to open up a new public hearing.
Is it ready?
That's what we need to determine.
Should we determine whether we're going to add termination of residence and get feedback from another judge before we open up another public comment? Let's have a complete product before we do this.
Yeah, so let's, let's.
I could go either way.
Let's tighten up those things before we say that this is the final draft.
So, my only two questions for Will is asking him about if we can talk to other judges, and the reason Don just said Ithaca is because we literally lifted Ithaca's law, where Cornell is and Ithaca College and some other colleges, they are a bigger city, and they, they've had this law on the books for a while, so rather than inventing the wheel, we stole theirs, and even made it a little tighter. And I'll ask him about termination of tenancy.
You guys only have to be here for an hour? So you can come, we'll sign. But you're more than welcome to stay for the entire meeting.
Just take two hours, two people sign it. Do you have one to sign?
Is that nursing school requirement?
Where do I sign?
What is today? Sure, you don't have your phone, Christian Berta? I've known all these children since they were little.
All right, continuing. So I motion that we approve Villager New Paul's payment 162, it's an estimate number four for the furnishings and installing of the floating steel digester cover for the amount of $289,500.58 to CFI contract.
You skipped the green infrastructure.
I'll go back to that one. So, everyone was good with that?
Yep.
Next, I motion that we move forward with retaining Barton and La Judas and their engineer Rebecca Minas to undertake the green infrastructure capital feasibility grant project.
A second.
All in favor?
I just have, I'm in favor, like, can you just say what the cost of this? I saw a lot of numbers on the page that looked large beyond.
The grant award was like something around like the low 40s, and I think the estimate is, you know, to use all that money.
Okay.
So the idea is that we're going to get shovel-ready projects designed.
I thought I saw much bigger numbers than that, maybe I was looking in the wrong place.
No, it's not bigger than.
Okay, 45, yeah, there was something else. Okay.
So all in favor?
Aye.
NBR zone discussion, so what I'd like to do is just let, let's pull out our calendars and come up with a time for the next workshop meeting, because I think that works better.
Yes.
When our brains are less mushy and we're not thinking of 20 agenda items. So what do you guys, I was thinking that we could do an NBR, and we can invite Russell Urban Mead to meet with us, like, some afternoon at 4:00 or 5:00 p.m.
And do the workshop earlier? Is this the hydrology comma water treatment workshop? Or are you seeing those as different things?
I think so, all in one.
Well, just, if you had one meeting in the afternoon, why not in the evening like usual?
Well, just to give people, it seemed like we were having trouble getting everyone, everyone's availability for like a Wednesday meeting, right? Like, we couldn't do next week, right? The 15th was no good for somebody.
For me.
And then the 22nd is Thanksgiving.
Well, we're supposed to have a meeting that night.
No, we're not, it was.
No, it's the 29th.
Rescheduled for the 29th.
Oh, how did I miss that?
I mean, we could do, what about like even late Friday, 5:00 p.m. on the 17th?
Why can't we do the 15th?
15th, someone said they could do that.
I can't do the 15th, you can do it without me, but I have a prior commitment.
No, I think that the goal is to have everyone here.
I mean, we don't have to do it on a Wednesday.
No, we do not, so that's why we're trying to pick it.
Yeah, I would like to avoid a Friday, just because no one's paying attention.
Well, 16th, we have a joint meeting, the 13th and the 14th, I'm in Albany, there's a NICOM conference on the 13th and a Department of State meeting on the 14th, 15th, something, joint meeting 16th. Fri- Friday, late in the day, you guys are saying no, so we can do Saturday at noon. Come on, give me something here.
Because you want it before Thanksgiving?
No, I'm, I just want to move it forward, we can, we can wait, but we could do it whenever, what are you proposing?
Yeah, unfortunately, the 20th and the 21st are already booked for me.
20th and 21st are no good for KT.
I mean, I'd be willing to do a Saturday thing, but don't hate me, people who hate that idea.
If it's morning Saturday, like 8:00 a.m., something like that.
8:00 a.m., yes!
Saturdays are a challenge for me.
No time Saturday?
Nutcracker rehearsals.
Saturday night?
They're like all day Saturday.
Yeah, yeah, are you the dad in a tuxedo?
No, I'm not, I'm not, I, but anyway.
27th, 28th, no. 27th, 28th.
Can we just stick with Wednesdays, since we know that's a day that people can remain?
Well, we're to decipher.
Well, we already have, we already have a meeting on the 29th.
No, I know.
We could start at 5:00 on the 29th.
What about 27 or 28? No, because you got, we got 28th, you have meetings.
Yeah, I got.
Monday, the 27th.
27th, I could do that.
I have lots of meetings.
Oh, you have fire on it?
I have flyer, bike pad. Unless it's like 5:00, something like that.
I have affordable housing until 7:30 on Tuesday, but then, I think EC, EPB, whatever that environmental acronym is, is right after that.
KT, can you do the 15th at a time other than 7:00, or that complete day out, to keep it consistent with the public use to on Wednesday?
You know, since we're having such a difficulty in finding a time to talk about this, I think we can nail down one of the items, there's only a couple items still remaining open in this issue, and one of them I think we could resolve right now, pretty quickly. Bill and I had spoken over the weekend, and we put together a proposal on one of the big open items, and I guess to try to move things along, I'd like to make a, make a motion that with regard to rooftop decks in the NBR zone, that the following restrictions or following policies we could put in place. Number one, there would be no lighting or electrical outlets. If electrical outlets are required by code, we would have only knee-high lights, because there was a lot of concern about light pollution for the neighbors. The second item would be dawn to dusk hours of operation. I think there's some desire to treat this space as recreation space in the context of recreation fees, and if that's a concept people are friendly with, I think we need to treat rooftop decks the same way we do any other recreation outdoor space in the village, and have it operate during the dusk, that'd be the second point.
Well, can we, can we pause on that? Because I am totally opposed to allowing a developer to say that their rooftop deck is in lieu of a rec费.
And I just want to say that I'm opposed to throwing this out and voting quick on this right now, I think it needs more discussion. I think it needs more discussion. I've run into multiple members of the committee who have lots of things they still wanna discuss. We haven't given a lot of opportunity for the public to come and hear from them yet. I'm not, I don't, I, I don't support the specifics of it, but I also don't support the process of this right now. I think that, I appreciate the desire to keep the train moving, but I, I think that, um, we need to be thoughtful and, and, and not just do it that way, it makes me uncomfortable.
Well, I think, uh, you know, while, while I agree with you, I don't think that a motion is required. Some of the, uh, things that we've been discussing with the NBR, as we've seen a majority, we've said okay and we've put it to the side and then we've moved to the next issue. If we have a majority on this, then why wouldn't this fall under the same process?
We haven't taken a formal vote and lots of things that we don't have a majority on. I've heard from people that wanna come and talk to us about it before we decide.
Alright, well, at our last meeting, you came in, you laid out a list of things that you thought that we all agreed on.
Right, but I didn't mean it wasn't still in motion. So if I presented it in that way, I didn't mean to. I've, in my eyes, everything's still in motion.
I believe I have the floor because I was in the process of making a motion.
Sorry about that.
The, the third item was transparent sound barrier around the perimeter, specifically the edges facing residential housing. And there's just three more, or two more. Grass roofs would be a stated preference for rooftop decks in the code. In the code, not as, as part of the, uh, part of a motion we would pass. And there'd be no barbecues or smoking allowed in rooftop decks in the NBR zone. So that's the motion, and, uh, I just wanted to finish making it to see if there might be a second.
I'm gonna call the two meaning rule on that then.
That's fair, cool, we'll talk in two weeks.
Okay, so back to the calendar. Uh, is there a time on November 15th?
Um, I have to be in Western Duchess by, Eastern Duchess by 6:00, so I'm sorry. I mean, you could do it without me.
We're not doing it.
We could do 5:00 on the 16th before the joint meeting.
That's a possibility.
I like that idea.
I don't like that idea at all, but it's a possibility.
I'll second that.
We could, we could, um, because it's at the community center, right? So we could-
In theory.
What do you mean in theory?
That, are you gonna go with that we could have it there?
Yeah.
If it's, if it's available?
Available, yeah.
That place books big time.
Not at 5:00 PM.
Well, we should find that.
They'll charge us rent probably.
Believe in, we can have it here at 5:00.
Yeah, but then, then we're kind of like wasting our travel time.
They have to ask Climate Action. Well, yeah, we, we can't decide now because we don't know, we'll find out if it's available.
So you wanna tentatively shoot for 5:00 PM on the 16th at the community center?
Yes.
Well, board members, I wish you a good rest of the meeting, I've got to attend to my, uh, my work, the reason I've traveled. So, uh, thank you so much for accommodating me by Spike, Skype, and I will, uh, see you in person next time.
See you later.
See ya, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Have fun.
Okay, so, let's confirm whether we can get to community center. But that's kind of a, well, that, that's nice though, that it gives us a bunch of flexibility. If we start at, is 5:00 too early then, or maybe we should, maybe we should have it at 5:30? Because we only need, this'll force us to keep it an hour and a half when the joint-
They have police commission beforehand.
They do, that's true, they do a bunch of stuff.
Yes.
Do they have smaller, I mean, police commission goes into, um-
No, they're in the big room.
But, but they get filmed, police commission gets filmed? Okay.
There's that side conference room.
But isn't, are you sure it's police commission that day? Because usually-
Can you pull up the town calendar, do you see anything? Well then, let's just have it here at 5:00, that's easier. And Climate Action can take this room and we'll go in, uh, oh, we can-
Well, we should be in here so we can record it and they can go in the other room.
Yeah, they, they, they often, they don't have, they don't mind going in that room.
They go in there, I'm seeing them there.
That's the nicer room, it's got better, better, uh, function.
Yeah, we have better chairs in here now.
Less injury hazards.
So let's just do that, we'll shoot for 5:00. It'll either be here or the community center, to be determined. But then we can publicly notice it, you know, the next day or two, once we make that decision. Alright?
Well, now we need a hydrology slash water treatment.
No, that's the same conversation.
We're gonna do all at the same time?
Yeah, because Russell's coming to talk with us for 15 minutes.
Okay. I didn't realize.
I mean, maybe 30, but-
We are gonna have to be disciplined.
But yeah, we'll be disciplined, max 30 minutes with Russell. And then we'll just go right into an NBR workshop.
Okay.
Okay, so our, our next agenda item is Proposed Home Occupation Code Overhaul Amendment. Anyone have any thoughts on that? Because I kinda feel like that's such a specific thing and it all came out of, we went to court, we didn't have code language that was appropriate, it would've been better if we had better code language. Kinda just feels like, it's one of these like proposed laws that should be on the shelf and then the next time we have one, we do it all together. What do you think?
I mean, I've looked at it a few times, I don't, I don't, I don't know the history, so it's sort of been something where I've been like, somebody needs to explain to me like why we're doing this, or is this just one of those pro forma, we need to fix our law things and, I don't know.
Bill, were you involved?
Uh, slightly, and our planner worked on it quite a bit. I guess there were questions about what exactly is a home business? This is why it was addressed.
Did he do this?
So, that's all I can really offer.
So was it, what, do you, are you familiar with, was it in his memo about like what was the hiccup where we went to court? Like, what was the example?
What to say off, I do not recall.
I, I don't think we've gotten that many.
Or did it only say in the memo that we went to court, the language wasn't there, so we had, we had no recourse? Is that what the memo says?
The village was involved in an enforcement action alleging, alleging an activity on a property was not residential in nature and akin to a home occupation. However, when this matter went to court, there was a settlement as the parties, including the vigil attorney construed that existing codes were too vague.
It'd be great to know what specifically happened.
Should we table this until we can get more information?
So, next agenda, the 29th? Okay, I'm gonna rewind, uh, item number five, approval of Alex and Christina to be given administrator access on the village website just so they can do specific functions. Second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it looks like we have, uh, this one pager of a rec fee process. This looks like some pretty-
I don't know if this is actually-
Weiny stuff.
It looks like more than that actually.
I don't think this is exactly what we were asking for.
Based on the heading.
Whatever this is, it definitely requires reading it when you have like a clearer head.
If I only had a brain.
So let's just put that on the next agenda.
Right.
Okay, next item, web optimization discussion.
Alright, so you thought we were done with this?
I was surprised.
Uh, so, when I went back to the Historic Preservation Commission and told them that the village board was not willing to spend the money for the web optimization coding, they said that they would be willing to contribute $300 from their budget to make it happen. So I'm just coming back to see if the board is more comfortable with an estimate that is between $200 and $700, given that it is subsidized by the HPC.
So their entire budget is $600. They're gonna spend half their budget on web optimization when it depends which browser one might use where the thing shows up?
The most popular browser by far does not work, that being Google. And one of the things is, yeah, the HPC has worked, been working very hard on an informational video to try and get it out into the community, what they do. And the concern is that they're gonna have this video and trying to get out into the community what they do, and then when people search for them, they can't find them.
But they can find them on Facebook.
They can find them on Facebook, but that doesn't link to the certificate of, uh, applicability or any of the documents that they're looking to drive people to.
What certificate?
Uh, certificate of CO8, the abbreviations.
I can't wrap my head around how much it costs and that, it's really the most cost-effective way to get this done. Are we confident that we really can't do it in a more, um, in a less expensive way? Maybe coming from a different angle, like from, I don't know, it just-
We tried and unfortunately, we were told that it was too much coding for someone to do. And this company says that they can do the coding.
See, that's what concerns me though is, this is our current website, which is not a great website. I don't know, I'm, I'm sure within the not-too-distant future, we'll probably have a new website. So, we're spending money on, you know, putting, you know, a Band-Aid on not a great existing website.
Can I ask my computer science peeps on campus if there's maybe-
Yeah, that would be great, maybe, maybe-
I'm not insisting on spending the money, I just want to solve the problem, so if we have a cheaper alternative, by all means.
Yeah, let me just see, because there might be, yeah, before we do this. I mean, I, I feel for the HPC and I, and they do such good work and their people who are on it are really invested in it and, and, you know, it's a, it's a really good thing, so I don't want any of them to think that we don't want, you know, to help them get their word out, but we also-
Club or board or commission require the same thing? Like, why?
Now you're really open to can of worms.
Alright, so you're gonna, you're gonna get a, uh, an expert to fix it, grasp.
I don't know about that.
Dennis is reporting back that it's-
KT's on the case, nobody needs to worry.
I wrote it down.
Okay, so, uh, the next item was, um, back in February, we applied to the Department of State's Municipal Restructuring Fund to get some money for the town and village to reimagine a municipal building that was shared. The feedback that we got was that we were not aggressive enough in terms of our application. We really didn't ask for, we didn't present as many savings and it also seemed like, there's another key thing too where the DOS is now comfortable with the idea of us including in our calculation the potential savings that would exist from renovating an existing building versus constructing new.
Cost avoidance.
Yeah, the cost avoidance number, they're going to allow us to put that in, um, an application. But, I've been, um, we got approached by, uh, Tim Weiderman from the county's Office of Economic Development after the, the folks in Kingston received their Downtown Revitalization Initiative Award for $10 million. And he said that he would be interested in helping us broadly with, you know, getting grant money for, for a building. So he, he took a look at our application and he was willing to resubmit and that the deadline was actually today, it was November 8th. And he did some research that said that we could have, um, even taken our existing resolutions that, that our board passed back earlier in the year to, to submit. And we were thinking, yeah, let's do that, let's just like throw spaghetti against the wall and see if it sticks. But, the more we talked about it, we were like, why don't we have a better plan? You know, especially as we're, we're waiting for the, um, appraised value of this property. We're, you know, still digesting, well, you know, I guess we can open up this discussion about, we should probably have the discussion with the town more officially next week about, you know, the idea of purchasing that gateway building. But, I think considering that it's at the 190-foot elevation level, that probably wouldn't be the most prudent thing for a municipality to have a building in. It's one thing when you're a private developer, it's another thing when, like if there wasn't an emergency and that'd be kind of embarrassing for us to say, yeah, we'd love to help you, but we can't get to work either.
Yeah, I mean, communities are using their, um, what's the, um-
Gozer?
No, the firehouse money.
Yeah, Gozer, government.
Okay, yeah, they're using, like, Washington Hill is like moving everything because they're in the mood of floodplain, you know what I mean? So, like, people are doing the opposite.
Well, it's, it's exactly like when there was a, a proposal to, um, enhance the bridge that crosses the walkway at Springtown and we were gonna try to do that with Gozer money and Gozer's like, you can't do it, look at its elevation, you know? It's just not smart.
Yeah, it's not just about replacement, it's about location.
Yeah. So I think for that reason-
And they gave us specific feedback about this grant, just to go back to just not resubmitting, right? They gave us feedback about why it wasn't strong enough, like you said, we weren't aggressive enough. So why would we resubmit as is and not take their advice?
No, because we were going to resubmit with more aggressive assumptions.
Oh, okay, I thought we were just gonna roll it over and do it again.
No, 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 Tim was going to actually improve our application.
He was gonna add those cost avoidance numbers.
Yeah.
Okay.
But then we were thinking like, but it's all still too conceptual.
These are rolling applications? Are they, how often are they?
Yeah, the next one, they're, they're generally quarterly.
Okay, so that's like practically-
So it is rolling, so we'll probably have another one. But, you know, it's so disappointing in that like, the max award is like $400,000. Like, local government efficiency awards are like 300,000, like, we're jumping through all these hoops to, you know, it would be great to have a few hundred thousand dollars, but-
Drop in the hat.
It's a drop in the hat when you think of like spending several million dollars.
Opportunity costs, you're, you're spending X to chase Y and the net is-
There's nothing as bad as those NICERTA grants, they were, it was like new construction NICERTA programs. And they were like, yes, and the calculation shows you would be eligible for $40,000. It's like, we were talking about a new construction is a $10 million building.
Yeah.
And then, and they were also saying it was like a very competitive, difficult grant. Alright, so, so that's just no board action because, you know, it's really just an update.
Stay tuned.
And then we, you know, we, we should have that on the agenda, which I'm sure we will, with the municipal building folks or with the town hall or town board when we meet with them at the joint meeting next week. Okay. The next is a, um, a shared service agreement between the town of Asopis and the village of New Falls. I think this was like a, a document that several towns in the county had vetted with their attorneys and this is kind of considered the best shared service approach. And I think the belief is that it would be with Asopis and other towns. But Will is currently looking at it, so we're just gonna punt until the next meeting.
Oh, okay. It's awesome though.
Did you read it?
I did. I meant it's awesome in concept.
Oh, okay, I, I thought you were like especially excited about something and, you know, because to me it just seems kind of-
You just, I just love me some shared services.
Sure. Well, we did brainstorm with the supervisor from Asopis about sharing a sewer truck. But that didn't really work out.
They have a new town supervisor now.
They do.
Or they will on January 1st.
Right, okay, so next item, Board Rules of Procedure, Public Comments and Public Hearings. I'm not exactly certain why this is now on the agenda.
It come, it came up a couple times during the public hearing, um, but, um, and along the way, so. I had forgotten that we actually have this whole section, Guidelines for Public Comment, on the rules of procedure that we've already, um, all signed off on. Obviously, you know, nothing in this is written in stone and we can change it, but it is our rulebook to go back to and see. One thing about our meetings though, we have to remember is that they're run by the presiding officer. So if you look at, which is typically the mayor, um, all of these rules, and I'm looking at the heading Guidelines for- at the heading, guidelines for public comment, that subsection of our rules of procedure, on almost every one of them, you know, it's determined by the presiding officer unless a majority of the board disagrees. So we have all sorts of things about, you know, how long people can speak, and the role of the presiding officer, and recognizing them, and that things should be germane to topics at hand. And I guess it came up because, you know, we like a more open way of communicating with our public, so we tend to ask them questions both during public comment and, you know, when they're here, because...
I think it really depends on the topic, and it also depends on how many people want to speak. Because I've been at public hearings where, like, you have a line out the door...
Right.
And then that's where you have to be super rigid, and you want to have no back and forth with anyone, and you want to limit the amount of time. So that's where you have to be rigid. Whereas if it's, like, even when we did that NBR workshop, we were, like, super fluid, like, it was, like, very conversational. I don't think anyone was used to being able to speak as much as we, we were encouraging the community to speak. So I think you got to kind of ebb and flow with the topic, with the number of people.
And I think, you know, I'm comfortable with the rulebook as it is. I think it provides that flexibility. I think if the, you know, I, you know, I'm open to hearing suggestions to revisions of this rules of procedure, but I think, you know, it's fine to remind ourselves that it's there, and that it's, it's guidelines, and I guess I'd like to get a sense of everybody else is comfortable with taking it on a case-by-case basis.
Kind of, you know, I remember before Tim Donahue and myself came into office, the previous administration did not respond to public comment at all, and I thought it was nice that we started having a little bit more interaction when we, when our board took office. I love, I love consistency, so that way, nothing can ever be abused by anyone at any point in time. But at the same time, it's, like Tim said, sometimes we have a line out the door, if we give everybody an unlimited amount of time to speak, we're never going to get any business done. So I think it is just, has to be open on a case-by-case basis, and if anybody's ever abusing it, then hold them accountable.
I mean, it's not completely open, right? We do have parameters.
I'm not worried about us, I'm worried about future us.
Right. I mean, I think one of the arguments for not interrupting is, is, is the impact on people's comfortability with coming up to the mic, right? So we live in a small community, and I know if it's somebody I know, I might be more inclined to say, hey, what do you mean? You know, than someone that I don't know, and I don't want them to feel uncomfortable, because they didn't come up to get asked questions. So it is sort of like, we're also feeling it out in a small community with who we're comfortable with engaging or not, so...
It's very, it's very...
I throw that into complicated even more.
It's very ad hoc, like, even a few weeks ago, we had some younger students here, and I felt like they kind of got their point across, and they were kind of new and excited about making their public comment, and I was very comfortable, like, let, let them, you know, reinforce what they just said, whereas if it was like, you know, some...
Somebody who's heard 800 times already.
Some brochy old man, like, listen, buddy, we heard you already, next, you know?
You know, but that's, but that's a good point, because we, you know, I personally did respond to them, because I felt like there was something inaccurate in what they were saying, and it was important to get that out there. So it is nice to have the luxury to speak, to speak back to people. Perhaps we just say, at the beginning of public comment, you set the rules for that public comment. So if you see a line out the door, you tell everybody, look, we have a lot of people, keep it to two or three minutes. If you don't have this situation, you don't, you know, whatever parameters apply to everybody at that point in time for that meeting.
Yeah, I think you definitely set yourself up for failure. Let's say, like, your first two public comments are really long, and then the third one comes up, and you're like, nope, two minutes for you, that's it, you know, that would...
Yeah, you have to be consistent within one meeting.
The meeting, right, that's, like I just said.
Yeah. So, we, I'm looking at this now, it actually says, under 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, bullet 8, "Board members may, when the speaker has finished his or her remarks with the permission of the presiding officer, ask questions of the speaker for the purposes of clarification or information." So we sort of say that we're not going to interrupt people. Having said that, I don't, I mean, not arguing for revision here, I'm just noting that we do say that.
Okay, can I go to the next? We didn't add anything to the end of the meeting, right?
Before you move on, I just want to bring up, I'm getting text messages from our colleague in Arizona, asking me to bring up some of the points that he made by email today regarding the operating procedures. Item number 16, Village Board Procedures Add, "As with all meetings of the village board, workshop meetings and special meetings of the village board will be recorded and made available to the public." I guess we can take them one at a time.
I thought we already said that in here. There was an email, like, right?
I thought it was in there, too. I'm relaying the message, and if it's not in there, I'd like it in there. Does it not specifically speak to workshop meetings or special meetings? Is that perhaps?
I don't know, because I only pulled out that one section, and now I got to find that in here. It's going to take too long. Can we just punt that to the next meeting?
We can come back to it next time when Don's here to speak to it himself. Okay.
So there was nothing added to the end of this agenda, right?
Just, just to get it out there, the other thing that he added, that he would have wanted to add was, "During public hearings, trustees will hear to..."
New York City.
I think that's what we just went through, limiting the discourse to request our information. Okay, so we can just punt it until next time. Thank you.
So there was nothing else, right? On this agenda that we added to?
Yeah, I think that's it.
That's it, so just...
Bills and claims.
That was your motion to move bills and claims?
It was.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
What happened to our audience?
Motion to adjourn. I don't know, but the whole meeting, I thought that that clock was right, and I realized...
Yeah, you were like, I'm exhausted.
I know, I was like, let's do this.
Did we motion to adjourn?
No.
I just did. Second, all in favor?
I... So it's really nice that it's nine o'clock, not 10 o'clock right now. Even though I think my body still thinks it's 10 o'clock.